Okay, we're gonna continue our committee of the whole meeting. I apologize for the inconvenience of us not being here when you got here. What we were doing was we were on our third walk around town that we've done this year to date. We stopped on our walk tonight, we stopped at Aliano's and talked about that facility for a little bit. It's just recently been purchased by another operator and it's been taken over for their purpose. And then we went on down further onto the strip mall there where Brianna's is in process of opening up their restaurant. They're working on that, soon to be open. From there, we walked across the street and visited the Storehenge Project, talked about that a little. And then we went on further on the east, on the south side of the bridge and visited the new piece of art that just got put up there, talked about that for a little bit. Made our loop around on River Street, recognized the fact that Al Taco Grande is recently and is still in the process of replacing all their windows and bringing that building up to the kind of condition that we all hope to see it stay in for a very long time, making quite the investment there. Then we walked along River Street, talked about the fact that there could be another arch put up at Newsboy Alley. There was one planned at one time, so that's something the council could talk about if they choose to. And then walked on along and looked at the wall that's recently been cut down and the landscaping and the bridge that's been, or the parking lot that's been put in. And then also, lastly, the new perch for the birds to sit on when the existing tree that's about to fall over actually comes down. So that was our third walk. I think, Mayor, you're planning on one more at least this year?
Probably.
Okay.
Aye.
But we'll go on then to the remainder of the meeting.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien absent.
So the next item is item number six.
Callahan?
Aye.
We did have a motion for Newsboy Alley, made by Chanzet, seconded by ATAC. Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
You're absent.
I'll amend my motion to say that I would direct staff to review what it would cost
Serone?
Aye.
And McFadden?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
for us to revive that project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it was an important part of the street, and you brought up a good point.
We'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda.
We planned for it, we asked for it, we probably should look into it and not completely abandon
We have one item there, that is Ordinance 17-52, Anexing 502 Roberts Lane.
it. That's why I made the motion.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. A memo came out on that. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Again, Dan, it's to direct staff to look... Could I get a motion?
To look into what it would cost for us to actually erect a decorative archway
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McFadden, second by Serone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
on Newsboy Alley.
Motion's carried. Send that on to City Council. I think what we'd have to do in that case would be we'd have to direct staff Next one is item seven, the presentation on the 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial to come back to us with some ideas and probably hire some type of a consultant and/or an artist Report, presented by Brian Lefever of Sickich. to give us some ideas that we could put out there for our pondering and community thought And Peggy Colby, you gonna start us out with that?
Yes, good evening. I was just going to introduce Brian Lefever from Sickich.
in order to put something up.
Sickich has been our auditor for the last five years for the 2012 through the 2016 audit,
Because it was never a arch that was defined to be put there. There were ideas, but never any definitive arch.
and he is here to present it here to you tonight.
No, and it could certainly be treated like the artwork that we viewed tonight.
It's been posted online for the public to see, and all of you have a hard copy of the
It could be sent out to the public to see who can design something, and then that wouldn't
board communication and the audit itself.
really cost us anything if someone wants to take the specs.
Well, thanks Peggy, good evening, and thank you for inviting us here this evening
And I guess that's what I'm directing staff to do.
Yeah, okay, very good. Everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second on the floor. We better do a roll call on that.
Rosato?
to present some brief comments on the report resulting from the audit of the city for your
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
year-end of December 31st, 2016.
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
As Peggy mentioned, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also known as the CAFR, is also on the city's website. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is over and above what's required in an audit for statutes, and I think all of you should understand that. You have an introductory section which has some good information in it, but you also have a statistical section which has a lot of 10-year trend information, gives you a lot of good history of the financial statements over the last 10 years for the city. Within the introductory section, and so what's required for the audit is the financial section, and when you do a CAFR, that allows you to participate in an award program which is on page three of the introductory section, so Roman numeral three, is the award that the city received for its CAFR for the 2015 year-end. This is from the Government Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and this is the highest level of reporting within the local government industry. You should all be proud of that, and it's the ninth consecutive year that the cities won the award. And then the 2016 CAFR then is submitted to the process, and you usually find out in a few months the results of that. Within the financial section of the audit, the first document you come to there on page one is the Independent Auditor's Report. This is on Sickich letterhead, because this is where we give an opinion on the financial statements. In order for us to give an opinion on the financial statements, we're required to follow two sets of standards. One are the auditing standards issued by the AICPA that tells us the types of procedures we need to perform when we're conducting our audit. And then the second set of standards are the financial reporting standards, which apply to local governments such as yourself, which are issued by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. So you might recall, GASB made some changes last year that we see again on the financial statements this year, where pension liabilities are reported directly on the, what are referred to as the government-wide financial statements, so a second year of that. And then we've given our opinion on the financial statements, which is an unmodified opinion, and the financial statements present fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, free of material misstatement. And this is the highest level of opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. In addition, there was a separate compliance opinion that's required to be conducted related to your TIF, and that is also on page 152, which is also a clean or unmodified opinion related to your compliance with allowable costs in the TIF. Just past the Independent Auditor's Report is a document called the Management Discussion Analysis, begins on page MDNA-1. If you don't have a chance to read the entire CAFR, this is what I would start with. This is your executive summary. The city prepares this, it's required by GASB. We review it to make sure it's consistent with the financial statement presentation, but the nice thing about this document, it's the one place in a financial report where you can give the whys of the financial statements. All the numbers are just the result of the whats, but this is a place that you can actually go to and look at to see that information explained, both graphically and really well-done. Goes for 17 pages, and then just one of the highlights in the financial statements that I would bring to your attention is often looked at as, how is our general fund doing, our main operating fund? So in, on page 11 is where you'll find the revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the year. You had a planned decrease in fund balance for the year, and it turned out actually better than what the plan was. So you had a slight decrease in fund balance, but leaving just over $17.6 million in fund balance as of December 31st. Fund balance being the amount that you had available in reserves to begin the fiscal year that you're operating in now. I won't, I won't direct you specifically to the pages, but obviously hot topics in local government involve pension funding, your IMRF, police and fire pension funding. You're doing exactly what the actuary recommends. You'll find that information on pages 70 to 75 of the report, and the city has each and every year funded each of its pension plans in accordance with what the actuaries have recommended. It functions differently for police and fire, where you have an independent actuary, versus IMRF, where IMRF provides a, essentially a percent of covered payroll that you contribute each and every month through that process. In conclusion, the audit went very smoothly, we received all the information that we requested on a timely basis. In addition, it's noteworthy to understand that we had no recommended adjustments to the financial statements, which is really kind of unheard of in an audit this size. So Peggy and her team, and understand, her team includes all the city staff, because it's not an audit of finance and it's an audit of the entire city. So gathering that information, working with other departments, you have very professional staff and easy to work with, and we really enjoy our relationship and appreciate our professional relationship with the city. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Brian, I just wanna say it's a pleasure to always have you come here, because you always bring us good news. But the good news is always because of the staff, you know, what they put into this in preparation for you, and as the mayor would say, the city council, today in the city council pass, it's always paid very close attention to the budgets and what goes on, so I thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
Thank you.
Lucy? I have a question. I think it's for Peggy. I think you addressed this in your letter.
Use the mic, please.
And it's mainly for me. In addition to the budgeting process, what are other controls that you review annually? Can you give some examples, just for my understanding?
Sure. We have multiple internal controls. We have check numbers that go in consecutive orders, so a check number can't be skipped. If it's voided, we still track that. Same thing with cash receipts, separation of duties between the accounting staff, and then reminders, at least once a year, I send out a reminder of all of our internal controls to all of the department heads, that they are to be reviewing with their staff internally on things such as inventory control, making sure that equipment is checked, those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Nick?
Yeah, Brian, I assume you guys do this for many municipalities?
We do.
You always come with great news. Is that out of the norm? It seems too good to be true, especially regarding the pensions.
So, there's really a couple answers to that. One is when an auditor is engaged to do an audit, the goal is to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. So that is to say, though, that typically we're going to, as we're doing our testing, we're going to have adjustments to the financial statements. That's why I pointed that out, because what that tells you is that the financial information that you're getting throughout the year is reliable, because that's what you're using to make financial decisions related to activities in the city. So that's very critical. And then related to, when you talk about, how is the city doing versus other cities, there's a lot of different ways to benchmark that, and everyone has a different opinion on that. But the, as I, the reason I brought up pension funding is because that's a struggle. And while you don't have a choice on how you fund IMRF, which is a great thing, because that means no one in the state has a choice, police and fire pension funding is a little bit different, and there has been some statutory provisions put into place whereby you have to fund at least a certain amount by a certain period of time, but there's a lot of communities, not necessarily in our area, right here in the Fox Valley, but in other parts of the state that have struggled and have not made that a priority, so they've fallen behind. So if you, you know, it's no different than funding for any kind of long-term plan, whether it's our kids, college education, whatever it is. If you skip a year, and when you read, like, in the paper that someone took a pension holiday, you skip a year, you fall behind a lot more than a year. And the city's not doing that, but other places have done that, because they said, "Oh, we're doing pretty good, so we'll take a year or two off," and then they're, they've fallen a lot more than a year or two behind. So it's not typical, you should be proud, but you should also realize that it's important. There's statutes in place for those benefits, and I realize at the local level that you don't control what those benefits are, but you do have those plans, so you're legally obligated to abide by those benefits that are provided. Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, then we're gonna go on to item eight, Resolution 17-81-R, authorizing the budget amendment for the electric utilities in the amount of $176,250. Alderman Chanzet, in the absence of Alderman O'Brien, do you have this?
Yes, a fairly non-controversial thing, so we'll try and make this brief. The substation out on McKee does need some work. There was a fault that took place in April that caused some equipment to fail, and this proposal here is to do work to restore telemetry and communications. According to the memo, the substation will be able to operate just like the other substations that have been improved, and if anyone has any questions, Rahat is here.
Thank you.
I guess what I saw in the memo was we're just accelerating this by a year because of the current problem.
Right.
Correct, and we're planning on doing this next year, we're just gonna take care of it this year.
That is correct.
Thank you.
No other discussion then? We'd entertain a motion to first authorize Resolution 17-81-R, which would be to authorize a budget amendment to increase the utility budget by $176,250.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. The next step is that we do need to waive formal bidding, so I would entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And then the last part is to approve Resolution 17-85-R, which would be authorizing Task Order Two with SEL Inc. for an amount not to exceed $176,250.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Let's go on consent then?
No, it has to go on a regular...
Oh, because of wave...
Yes, okay, thank you.
That is all for that.
All right, so we'll go on then, Alderman Chanzet, to item number 10, which is Resolution 17-84, authorizing a three-year contract with Associate Technical Services, LTD, for the 2017 through 2019 valve exercising and condition assessment program in the amount of $74,100.
Yes, and this is for work for the water utility, specifically on underground valves. We have projects that need to be done and ongoing maintenance that needs to be done, and if anyone has questions, we have Gary here as well. There is no discussion. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 17-84-R, authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2017 to 19 water valve exercising and condition assessment program.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And then the last part is to approve Resolution 17-85-R, which would be authorizing Task Order Two with SEL Inc. for an amount not to exceed $176,250.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Let's go on consent then?
No, it has to go on a regular...
Oh, because of wave...
Yes, okay, thank you.
That is all for that.
All right, so we'll go on then, Alderman Chanzet, to item number 10, which is Resolution 17-84, authorizing a three-year contract with Associate Technical Services, LTD, for the 2017 through 2019 valve exercising and condition assessment program in the amount of $74,100.
Yes, and this is for work for the water utility, specifically on underground valves. We have projects that need to be done and ongoing maintenance that needs to be done, and if anyone has questions, we have Gary here as well. There is no discussion. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 17-84-R, authorizing the execution of a contract for the 2017 to 19 water valve exercising and condition assessment program.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Put that on consent.
Please.
Okay. Item number 11, Ordinance 17-49, it's a variance for 424 Park Street. Amy and...
Guillermo.
Guillermo. Go ahead and put the rest of it.
Okay. Okay, this is Ordinance 17-49 for 424 Park Street. The owners of the house would like some relief from our current zoning, in that they're proposing a second-story addition, and Table 2.104 allows the second-story addition, but it has to have a setback of 1.7, or 7.5-foot setback, and this setback would only have 1.7 feet, which is a deviation of 6.3 feet. It allows the roof overhang to project into the required setback by approximately 1.2 feet from the property line, rather than the minimum required three feet, a deviation of 1.8 feet. The proposed variance would not change the footprint of the existing residence. The applicant indicated that the variances would allow for a reasonably sized addition, which is 340 square feet, with a minimal amount of code relief required, and there's just this code change that we may have to make. The application of the house was constructed prior to the adoption of the zoning code, creating the necessity for the variance. And the location of the existing residence proximate to the detached garage and property lines limits opportunities for expansion without a variance, and the consensus of the Zoning Board of Appeals was a positive recommendation. This passed unanimously through the Zoning Board of Appeals. So two members of the public addressed the zoning board, they were both supportive. One of the neighboring property owners expressed concerns about the close proximity to his property, would it increase his liability if someone were to fall off the house onto his property during the construction of the addition? Commissioners note that the risk already exists with the existing configuration of the property. So the Zoning Board of Appeals did agree that the findings approval would be met for the requested setback, which, as we all know, is their task. The alternatives are, the pros, we can allow them to proceed, the cons, we could, or, and the con, of course, would be that we're changing our zoning and putting the building closer to the property line than our code says. There's no budget impact, there's no staff impact. If we approve this or deny it tonight, it'll appear on the July 17th City Council Agenda for final action. So, does anyone have any questions, Drew, or the property owners? I have to say, this is in my ward, and I'm super excited that you guys are making improvements to the house on Park Street. So those houses are little tiny houses, and so this addition will make it a nice family home, so...
We've been there for 16 years, and we finally have this opportunity to be able to afford it, so...
I think that's terrific. Anybody have anything they want to add, or say, Alan?
Virtually the same thing at a house on Mallory Street that I had, was our first house in town, so I totally understand what you're doing and why you're doing it, and use the footprint. It's really all you can do on those lots, the little lots.
Scott, is there anything you guys need to say, or anything that... Oh, Drew's back there, sorry, I didn't see you hiding behind the... Is there anything you need to add? Okay, okay. So, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Chanzet, oh, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion was to approve this, because I realize when we were making a motion, we never said what we were making it for, so it was the approval of Ordinance 17-49, grant of approval for variances.
Okay, so this will go on the next City Council meeting's agenda, which is Monday evening, Drew?
Yes, and will be, should it be on consent then?
I'm sorry?
Should it be on consent agenda then?
It can, Susan, you want to go consent, or you want to talk about it?
Oh, my God.
It's nice to see people doing things to improve their property.
Yes, exactly. So if you guys would like to come back in and talk a little bit about it, that'd be great, if you have any pictures or anything you'd want to show.
I wouldn't, I mean, you don't need to, and I don't anticipate any issues. You've gone through the Plan Commission and now the Committee of the Whole, so I would anticipate you're gonna get a positive vote on it on Monday evening, but we like to talk about how people are doing good things in town, so that's why we're gonna put it on the regular agenda. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, Susan, we've got Ordinance 17-50, amending the text of the zoning code for the schools in the Zerl District. Vanguard Gifted Academy is the applicant. The memo came out of Community Developments from Drew. Susan, you want to take it?
Sure. The attached shortens would allow Vanguard Gifted Academy to open a private school at the former Old Second Bank Building, which is at 1078 East Wilson Street. So I'm sure we all know where it is, it's the place I always look for, the time and temperature when I drive by. Ordinance 17-50 would amend the zoning code to allow a school, public or private, school? Public or private to operate? Okay.
It's just that that's on the zoning code.
Yes, I got it, yeah. I had to say it twice, though. In the O Office zoning district, subject to conditional use approval. Specific conditions for this use would be included in the zoning code for the zoning district. And Ordinance 17-51 would approve a conditional use permit for Vanguard Gifted Academy to use the property, subject to conditions. So Elizabeth Letts?
Letts.
Letts, thank you. On behalf of Vanguard Gifted Academy, has submitted applications to propose a private school at 1078 East Wilson Street. They propose to adapt the existing Old Second Bank Building into a private school for gifted students. The proposal would also encompass the existing detention lot and vacant development lot to the west of the building. The property is zoned O Office District. The proposed changes would amend the text of the zoning code to allow a public or private school as a conditional use, subject to specific requirements. It also, the proposed text amendment would require that the schools in the Office District be in single-user buildings and not a share of building with other uses. It would require Plan Commission review of an outdoor play area and agreement to a fee in lieu if a non-taxable entity seeks a waiver of property taxes. Vanguard Gifted Academy would be subject to these requirements, and it has agreed to a fee of $5,000 annually to the city. A separate agreement would be negotiated with the school district. And that is in lieu of property taxes, Drew? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay. And so the reason there's a separate agreement with the school district is, again, same kind of thing, right?
Right, they're an entity that collects property taxes, so it would be a separate agreement.
So the building would be coming off the tax rolls?
Yes.
But we would get a $5,000 payment annually in lieu of taxes?
Yes.
Because they're a school?
Right.
And then the school district would also get money, again, because it's coming off the tax roll, but they'll get money in a separate agreement?
Correct.
Just wanted to check to make sure I understood that correctly, because I don't remember this ever coming through before like this.
Sure.
For the most part, the exterior of the building will not be changed significantly. Existing banking equipment, like night deposit boxes, will be required to be removed, but integral elements to the building, like canopy, will remain. The applicant proposes a landscape plan for the existing vacant lot, which would be used for outdoor play activities. The detention pond would also be owned and maintained by the applicants. For a detailed description of the proposed text amendment and conditional use requests, see the attached Plan Commission Staff Report. Are we maintaining the pond right now?
Right now, Old Second is maintaining that.
Okay. Have they always done it?
Yes.
Okay. So when this went through Plan Commission, two members of the public spoke. One inquired whether the school offered any pre-K programs. The applicants noted that there are no pre-K programs and that there would not be a large number of kindergarten students relative to the overall school size. Commissioners inquired whether there should be an additional barrier to prevent kids in the outdoor area, play area, from entering the street. The Plan Commission recommended inclusion of a decorative aluminum fence south of the proposed site landscaping. Plan Commission also included a recommendation to limit the school to K through 8 programming with no early childhood or pre-K programs. The commission discussed opportunities to expand at the site with the applicants. The applicants noted that as enrollment increases, one staff member would be added with each additional 10 students. What was the rationale behind Plan Commission saying no pre-K or K?
At the public hearing, we recently had another public hearing regarding a daycare...
Down the street.
Down the street.
Mm-hmm.
So, there was a discussion about that and its impact during the hearing. And the Plan Commission, I believe, based on the conversation with the applicants, the applicant noted that they weren't going to have such a program. So, the, like, the Plan Commission recommended inclusion of a prohibition about that, or regarding those type of uses. So, that would be limited to K through eight school, as proposed, so.
The Commission, thank you. The Commission agreed that a school use may be compatible use in the Office District with the review of conditional use and recommended requirements for the use. The Commission was also supportive of the requested conditional use for the Vanguard's proposal. And the Commission, by a vote of five to zero, recommended approval of the zoning code amendment and conditional use. And so, our alternatives, the pros, the ordinance passage of ordinance 1750 and 51 would allow for the reuse of a vacant building. The cons, not approving it would leave both properties as existing and potentially the Old Second Bank unused. A fee in lieu proposed to address lost property taxes with a nonprofit use and lack of development is giving us a positive budget impact. Is it positive? Is it about what taxes would be for us?
With the property as it's set up right now, the city would be receiving slightly more than it receives right now in property tax. The idea behind that would be that it's also a bit of a compensation for the fact that we have a property that's zoned for office that would be not developed for an office building with the vacant lot to the west. So, that was the rationale for that number. So, it's slightly higher for the city. I believe the school district would be receiving basically a lesser rate than what they've been receiving to date with the property.
Thank you. And staffing impact, staff time has and would be used to complete the entitlement process throughout the building permit process. Police and fire calls and other services typical of a school use would be generated by this property, which would be consistent with commercial use. The, my comment on this is, I'm not exactly sure I'm on board with approving it the way that the Plan Commission limited it so that there's no pre-K or K. That, to me, just seems like a weird overreach, in that just because there's another daycare down the road, you can tell this one not to have the same grades. That, to me, just seems like a very odd thing for the Plan Commission to even rule on. And so, that is just, just the way that I'm looking at this, in terms of, you know, how can we tell businesses, just for competition's sake? Why would we do that? So, that's the only thing, the only problem I have. Anybody else have any comments? Ian?
I just have a question, really briefly, for the mayor, and it's only because I forgot. Do we still have a bank moratorium on Randall? Is there a reason that the bank would look forward for this property, or?
It's not on Randall, though. It's on Wilson.
I'm sorry.
This one's on East Wilson Street.
Right, thank you. I'm sorry, I mixed up the property. I'll ask that question offline. Thank you.
Marty?
Regarding the condition regarding the fencing, as a requirement, do we have anything in the code that specifically addresses the need for that to begin with?
There's not a specific need within the, or specified within the code. Plan Commission, under the conditional use ordinance, you can make any, basically reasonable condition for the use. The idea of a conditional use is that there's some additional need for additional review, that there might be some things that are unique to the property. So, the Plan Commission, in their discussion, they were, there's this concern that if there is no barrier or impediment, other than the landscaping, that, you know, that they wanted to have at least some way to kind of retain the kids onto the site, rather than, you know, straying off into the street. So, that was the rationale for their recommendation. The applicant's showing, I believe it's a three-foot tall, or four-foot, I think it's a four-foot tall.
Three feet.
Three, okay. Fence along there. With it being a front, with a front yard, there are basically different requirements for height, but I believe in the Office District, basically, a taller fence, I believe, might be permitted. I'd have to double-check that, but.
I'm just wondering where else this would then, kind of going to what you're saying about, where do we, if it's not in our code that way, where do we kind of stop with that if we're concerned about kids going out into the street without fencing? None of our parks have fencing on streets, so where does that, what sets the difference between one business versus another versus another? If we had it as a code that it should be in there, that's different. But I don't know about necessarily the arbitrariness of one business versus another because they have kids, because McDonald's could then have to put up fencing because there's kids, and it just, we could either make the law that way, or if they so choose to protect their, I mean, they're liable for, and they can make the decisions on their own that way, and if the kids run out there, that's, that's going to be on them. But as a condition, we either change the law to make that as part of the zoning for these requirements for daycares and schools, or look at where we're going to be applying this going forward, pick and choose.
If I may make a remark about that, I think, you know, since this is a conditional use, you know, at the heart of a conditional use is conditions. And I think in this case, because of the fact that it involves children, there's going to be certainly teachers supervising them, but, you know, they're not going to be watching them every second of every day. And the fact of the matter is that this site is on a collector road. It's a busy road, there's a lot of traffic on it, and, you know, I think that was one of the concerns the Plan Commission had, was, you know, because of that, that would at least mitigate that ability for the kids to run out, especially because there's a tendency, I think, some of the kids might hide in the bushes or something like that, and then run out or what have you. So, you know, having conditions on a conditional use is a standard thing that we have normally done, so.
And I think that goes to, there was the, what's the end unit, one?
Yeah.
That was the one where that, that back door opens to, to, and, well, not to the, it opens to an alleyway slash through street, and there's no fencing around there. There was no requirement for fencing. And I believe the recommendation was, well, they should pay attention and make sure the kids don't go out the back door. So, we did not make them, as part of the development for that childcare center, put fencing around the back section, around the back door. It's...
Which one are you talking about?
I think that's the one that's a little bit further west.
Yeah, it's further west.
On Wilson.
Oh, the one on Wilson Street. You said First Street, I thought.
Because that was a concern that I had, you know, kids going out the back door, they're going straight into traffic. I mean, there's no, there's no barriers at all, and we didn't require a, any fencing around that at all.
We did require fencing around other parts.
Around the other part, but not directly out into the street.
I'm not sure we could do that because it's a fire code, though. That would be an exit.
It's, it's something where I understand conditional use, and I understand we can put conditions on things, but there's, you know, I would like it to be consistent with, you know, this is a school, and so if we look at our other schools in town, you know, where are fences required there? When we look at daycare centers, do we require them for daycare centers? So that we just don't arbitrarily say, you know, we think you need to fence because you're on Wilson Street, because there's a daycare center by the Dairy Queen on Wilson, and I'm not sure what type of fencing they have, and if that's required, or if it just is there. So, these are those kind of things where, when we look at these, it has to be consistent, and that's where I don't see any consistency here.
And I think that's my point with it. I think that if we believe there's a safety issue with these type of schools, and we're concerned about safety with fencing, I think that we should codify that and put that in so that it is, everybody knows it going forward, so that it's not conditional upon this project versus that project, that we're saying, we don't want children running out in the street, you must make sure that you're protecting them.
Susan?
I'm thinking.
To kind of piggyback on that, I'm not saying I agree or disagree with the fencing being in the conditional use, I think I agree with it, but is there a reason why they weren't concerned with the fencing on the west side of the property, where the pond is at?
I think they mostly, my recollection is they mostly were just concerned about them running right out into the street, you know, the, there's a detention pond there, and there's some additional landscaping that's going to be required as part of that, that might be more difficult for the children to get in there. Certainly, you know, they didn't want to impose that necessarily, but I think their main concern was just running out into the street.
See, that's where this just seems very inconsistent to me, because I would worry, if, as a parent, I would worry about drowning as much as running into the street. So, if I'm going to fence something, I better fence the whole thing, and so that's, again, why this seems very arbitrary. So, I'm not sure what we should do, Scott.
Should we have them address what their intent is with the property?
For sure.
As opposed to kind of guessing?
No, I know, but we're just kind of working through the...
So, the property is currently undeveloped, and we want to develop it, but just as a play area. We don't want to develop it as a playground. We don't intend to put playground equipment on it. So, it would be a playground area that would be always supervised by faculty.
And not just assistants and...
Right.
...uncertified, but full-fledged teachers in our, that's the...
Right.
Our model consists of educating during the time that we're out there for playtime as well, as a coaching times, if you will, and we'd be using the space for educational purposes, which is why we didn't want to build it up as just a playground.
Right. It would, it would be very structured. Classroom activities going on there, too, as well, you know, we've, together, we've done simulations of Revolutionary War battles, we've done different things like that. So, that's why we want an open space. And so, in developing that open space, we just wanted it open. The suggestion was made about a fence, we said we would not...
Oppose the application.
Oppose that if that was what they thought was important.
Thank you. Anyone, Scott?
One more question. I know you had brought up the concern about the Commission's recommendation of limiting them to K through eight, but as I look at the ordinance, it's not specifically in there with that limitation, correct?
Yeah, it is, I think.
It states, it states that they are K through eight, but it doesn't... I just, I have a problem with, that's out of, I think, out of their purview to be determining whether or not they can, you know, what they should be offering.
Mm-hmm.
I know that they're, that the, they've applied with the state, you know, that they're going to be K through eight, but they shouldn't have to limit themselves to that because of an arbitrary decision.
So, there will be an administrative design review, and so, and staff recommends that we have a text amendment to... Sorry, I may have scrolled too far.
You might be in the Plan Commission report.
Yes, actually, I'm into the Plan Commission report. Thank you, Drew. I was like, there's multiple pages here. Where did these come from?
Right, so the first action would be the text amendment to allow the use in this zoning district, and impose certain conditions, which were included in the presentation of the report, in terms of the fee in lieu, review of playgrounds by the, or review of play areas by the Plan Commission, the single use of the building, not being in a, not having a school in a multi-use building.
And so, with the conditional use for the permit of this school, the use permit shall be the entity known as Vanguard Academy and shall not be transferable. The petitioner shall enter into written agreements with Batavia School District and City of Batavia for payment of fee in lieu of real estate taxes, if the petitioner seeks property tax exemption, review of building facilities to ensure proper bathroom facilities and parking at each incremental increase of total enrollment by 25 students, removal and restoration of the building for drive-through bank fixtures before opening for classes, so the ATMs will be gone, installation of landscaping as shown in the attached landscape plan by May 31st, 2019, restoration of the existing detention area to the approved Johnson Woods native landscape plan by May 31st, 2019, parkway tree fee for lots 82 and 83 to be paid to the city for installation of parkway trees per original approved ordinance, the lowering of the fire hydrant B box and sewer lid to current grade on lot 83 before it opens for classes, and the installation of a curb to enclose the existing parking lot before the opening of classes. So, those are all parts of the conditional use. And the finding of facts were that the area is, has mixed uses, and so they found that it's compatible, that it conforms with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan, and they found that favorable. The proposed use conforms with the standards of the zoning code and any applicable local, state, and federal requirements. They found that to be fine, as proposed, and as conditioned, it would not unreasonably interfere with the use and enjoyment of nearby properties. And again, there's, they found in favor of that, there's separation from single-family residential uses and with open space and detention areas. So, it is up to us to decide if we should amend the zoning code to make this, to approve a school in the Office zoning district as a conditional use. So, that is ordinance 1750, and then 1751 would approve the conditional use permit. So, would someone like to make a motion to approve ordinance 1750, which amends the zoning code to allow a school there?
Do we have comments from the public, too?
Oh, we, okay, we do?
I don't know.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Does anyone from the public have anything to say about this?
I can answer your question.
You need to come up, you need to come up and use them, I can give us your name again for the record.
I'm Mary Jordan, and I live at 923 Barclay Court, and I live kind of at the other end of that subdivision, and I also have a gifted kid for a son. But when you come to talking about the questions about the daycare that was over by the Dairy Queen, was that, you know, did they have to put a fence in? Yeah, my son was one of the early individuals there. He also had gone to Daisy Daycare that Linda Anderson ran at Redant and Wilson, and she was also required to fence in the play area at the end of the thing. So, when it comes to, has there, has it been a mandate for, you know, putting fences up? Yeah.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments? Okay, so, would someone like to make a motion?
I have a question, Susan.
Sure, Dave.
Drew, they're going to be required to install the landscaping and, and bring the detention pond up to what it was supposed to be according to the original drawing. What requirements are there going to be on them to maintain that pond area, then?
There would be the typical property maintenance requirements. Part of the issue with this pond would be that there was a core permit, and bringing this back to what it was supposedly, originally supposed to be, would be under core review in terms of if it was not maintained to the level, which is basically the issue with the property right now, is that it wasn't maintained to that level.
Right.
So, basically, they had to restart that period of oversight again.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, now would someone like to make a motion?
Make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 17-50 amending the Texas zoning code for school in the O District.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Chantet.
I have to recuse myself from the vote on both of these. They are a client of mine.
Okay.
So.
Thanks, Scott. I guess we can just do a voice vote.
So, the motion is to approve it as recommended.
To approve the zoning.
In the zoning code, this is just the zoning code, this is not the conditional use. That's where we can talk about changing things.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries with one recused.
Okay, the next one, then, is ordinance 17-51 to grant the conditional use for the school.
Right, exactly. And this is where, if we have any comments, we want to change the way this is written, this is where it'll be. So, you know, those things that we talked about, whether it's the fence, or whether it is the...
Limited use?
Oh, yeah, the pre-K, the limited use, and calling those out, those are, it's now when we make those decisions, so.
I guess the question I would have on that is, it was proposed by the Plan Commission. Did the applicant okay that? Is there, are they okay with that, and that's not a problem with them? Because that's the business model they want to run.
It was never our intention to include preschool, so for us, that was, when they talked about it, and it, they said it was, you know, potential concern, I was more than glad to say, it was never part of our plan, we never intend to, and I have no desire to in the future. So, that made it.
But I also don't think, I mean, whether they wanted to or not, I don't understand why we, as a city, would want to limit what they can do there. That's where my concern is. I don't care if they wanted to, you know...
And the conditional use only stays with this owner of this business. It's not if somebody buys them out, and then they decide that they wanted to do that.
Right, exactly. But even so, again, it's like, why is that in our purview? That's my question. Why would we limit that?
Are you worried about the precedent?
No, it does.
First condition.
I think in a conditional use, just about anything is available, and that's why it was proposed. And if the applicant's okay with it, I don't have a problem leaving there, and I also don't have a problem removing it.
And if somebody purchased the school, someone would have to reapply.
Reapply.
Oh, no, I totally understand that. But again, why would the Plan Commission decide that they wanted to limit what grade students could be there? Because that, to me, doesn't make sense in terms of a conditional use.
It sounds like something they should take up at their meeting.
Yeah. So, okay. And the fence, we have to make a decision on how we feel about, again, since it's not in our zoning code, and it was something that they called out, especially for this conditional use, you know, what do we want to do with that?
I think my concern with it is if we're concerned about, they're obviously okay with putting the fence in for the reasons for the roadway, but Dave brings up a valid point. Well, how do you protect now about the detention pond? Do you require it to go in there? I think we have a, not for this matter, but I think we, for these type of things, it needs to be a policy decision going forward to look at that in the zoning code, so that people know going forward that it's in the zoning code as a requirement, and not, we do it all the time. If we do it all the time, then we should codify it and make sure that it's in the, on the books that, in that manner, so that we're not saying, to Dave's point, we want to protect the kids from running out in the street, but we don't want to protect them from going into the pond. That seems illogical, or we don't want to address it. Not that we're not concerned about it, but that we don't want to address it.
If the zoning board hadn't recommended a fence, would you have put a fence up?
No, we would not have.
So, I guess one of my concerns is, do we then go back to the school district and say at every school, they have to put a fence around every school property, because we were saying, this school has to do it? What's, what's the difference? I mean, that would be significant.
I think that's Scott's point about conditional use.
And there's a difference between public schools and private schools also, because we're preempted from regulating school, public schools on many levels, so we don't have the ability to do it, even if we wanted to in many cases.
But again, in this case, I think this is, are we, what's the point? I mean, if I was a, if I was somebody that was looking at this school, and I said, you don't have a fence around your, this area, I'd be concerned, and I may not allow my child to go there because of that. That's really up to the applicant, I mean...
What, well, I have a sense that one of the things that is different about this property is that it's much smaller and closer to the road than a lot of public schools. Public schools have some conditions where they have to have a certain amount of land. So if you look at the grade schools in the area, they're, they're on a large piece of land. So, and the playground is usually in the back, not in the front. So to me, that seems a little bit different.
It's an arterial road, this is the standard detour whenever work is done on Kirk Road as well. A lot of cars go past this.
Well, I understand it, but I guess, what is it if this were a daycare? Would they have to have a fence? Is that in our code?
Stable. That's a state requirement.
So we killed two birds with one stone. We allow them to do K through. Kidding.
I just want to make sure we're consistent, and this just doesn't seem consistent to me, and so that's why I, I can't approve it the way it's written.
Well, the way, the reason why I think it's different is because it's in an office district. It's not a standard one. This is a conditional use. This is a condition that we're adding to that.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the fence all the way around wherever the plan is playing it. I can't imagine that an insurance company is going to look at that property and say, we'll insure you with no fence, with a retention pond next to it.
Probably just good for business practice to have one anyways.
So would someone like to make a motion?
Do we want to leave the things in there, or do we want to change it before we make a motion?
No, I'm, I think I'm okay with the fencing, since they're okay with the fencing, but I think we have separately discussion, not currently, but at a later date. But the, the whole, the, the part about precluding it as a business decision, I would motion that we remove that as a condition.
Which the pre-K and K.
The pre-K, A.
But, but when I asked if, if they would have put a fence up, they said no. So I don't...
So they don't want one, they're doing it because we told them to.
Yeah. So that's where I'm kind of like...
But the other parts about it being, the, the other schools that have gone in on Wilson, there have been fences put up around those. So that's, it's not entirely out of line.
I would like to say, you know, we did plan a landscape plan with a landscape barrier in order to inhibit the children running into the streets. And we also, we're starting out very small. We're starting out with 20 children. As we get larger, we max out at 100. As we get larger, we may find we need a fence around that area to protect from both the detention pond and the street. But at this time, planning just for a small start, we have not planned.
One comment that I'd like to make about putting some sort of a barrier, be it, you know, a fence or a landscape barrier, I think something like that does need to be done because one of the things that you're not focusing on is, these are gifted children that are going to be there, and these kids think differently, or as a mother of a gifted kid who went to Illinois Math and Science Academy, these children, a lot of times, don't think.
They're unaware of their surroundings for the sake of being inside their minds.
That's true.
The fence is going to be there, then.
Okay, so...
So I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 17-51, 17-51, grant of a conditional use for a school, public or private, in the office district, Vanguard Gifted Academy, with the condition that the fence stays in, but the exclusion of K and pre-K gets removed.
Second.
Okay.
I have to abstain again.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay, let's do a roll call on this one.
That was made by Wolf, second by Ewer?
Yep.
McFadden?
No, sorry.
I'm sorry. Was it? McFadden.
McFadden.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
They sound the same.
They do. You need to look at me. Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question regarding the detention pond? Is there a landscape barrier that you were planning on doing between that and the detention pond?
You can see the plan.
There's one that already exists.
Okay, okay, great. All right, thanks. Then I'm okay with that.
So Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati is accused. Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien absent. Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Nay.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Nay.
Etac?
Aye.
Stark?
Nay.
And Chancet?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We don't need a super majority or any of that, do we, Drew?
No.
Anything? Okay, so, yeah, the vote was eight to three. So it does pass, it'll go on to City Council this coming Monday?
Yes.
Yep, and we'll put that on the regular agenda.
Very good. See you Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, your next item is item 14, ordinance 17-46, amending the Texas zoning code for temporary signs.
Okay, and this one Scott has, and this one, reading the memo makes my head hurt. And I'm sure it does you, too.
Yes, it's made it hurt a lot.
Yeah, the, the sign regulations, I mean, whenever you get in it, into anything where the Supreme Court of the United States has ruled on it, you are much larger than I can even wrap my head around.
Right.
So if you want to explain how this affects everything, that would be great.
I'm going to have Drew talk a little bit about the grunt work and everything else that went involved in this, but essentially, we were forced into this because of the Supreme Court ruling. Our sign ordinance is modeled on the Gilbert sign ordinance, which was actually invalidated by the Supreme Court. And so because of that, and because we had some issues with temporary signs in general as to how we were administering them, we felt it was prudent to make the changes to the sign ordinance before we have to make those changes. I had recently been at a conference, and there, that was kind of the talk of the town, was this ruling and how it's going to affect sign orders throughout the country, and what everybody else is going to have to do. And only a handful of communities actually were taking proactive action. The rest of them are waiting for future litigation to happen and, you know, get their sign orders thrown out. So we elected to take a proactive action on this and to try and address the situation in advance. And the problem is, is that we have to make a, basically a 180 on how we are administering temporary signs. We can no longer essentially look at what the content of the sign is. So right now, we have different classifications for real estate signs, ideological signs, temporary signs, so on and so forth, and we really can't do that anymore. Essentially, you're supposed to be content neutral and not look at what the message is. The only exception the Supreme Court said was that you can look at the content of the sign in order to determine whether it's an off-premise commercial sign. So it still keeps intact off-premise billboard requirements or regulations, but it does not allow you to look at a sign and see it's, you know, for a church sale, or for a school, or real estate, or what have you. So what we did as best as we could, after, you know, going back and forth on this a number of times, is try and develop a way to regulate temporary signs where we still allow people to have temporary signs, but also not allow for free-for-all. That was kind of the balancing act that we were trying to do. So we feel that we've done that by allowing for two different types of temporary signs, one of which that is, you know, the short-term temporary signs, 30 days or less type of signs, and then another one that is for the longer term, where you have perhaps real estate signs, or long-term community events, or, you know, whatever somebody wants to put on there for a longer-term situation. We have tried to address this as best as we can. It's tough. It's very tough, and we had a lot of discussions internally, trying to negotiate how we should best do this. You know, just like any other amendment to the zoning ordinance, it's comprehensive. We can't say it's going to be perfect. We think we should try and get it in place and work it out and see how it works. We do think it does address most of the issues that are out there. I'm sure, you know, not everybody's going to agree with that, but we think we've done a pretty good job in trying to work this through and develop regulations that we think are fair, but also not, you know, allowing everybody to have signs everywhere all the time. So that, with that, I'm going to let, you know, Drew talk a little bit more about some of the specifics.
Okay, great, thank you. And Drew, when it comes to things like this, and this just might be in my mind, it might be helpful, unless it's in here and I just, I'm not seeing it, if we had a redline copy so I could see what the original one looked like?
Yes, so...
And then what the new one looks like.
So in the packet, it'd be after the ordinance exhibits, although it'll probably look like the ordinance exhibits as well, there is a copy of the redline changes.
How many pages is this?
It's a substantial set of pages.
I found it finally, thank you.
So, yeah, I'm not sure where it starts on the PDF, but it's about that, at that point. But, yeah, essentially, the ordinance has the copy with all the changes as we're deleting many sections, as we're deleting several sections, you know, references to, you know, sign types that are no longer valid, there's a lot of reduction in the numbering. Those changes basically are just marked with reserved in the redline copy versus the final copy, all of the numbering should be corrected as, as a result.
Found it, thank you.
Yep.
There is a lot of redlining in here.
There is. And it does result in a somewhat shorter ordinance, but not by great leaps and bounds, but some.
I think it bears mentioning also, there's an exemption even for the longer-term signage that is six, is it six square feet and less?
Yeah, so essentially, and I'll, I'll say this kind of generally, it does vary with each district somewhat. Generally, a temporary sign, for, for example, in a residential district, it's a six-square-foot sign. So that off, that basically encompasses a lot of particular types of signs, the, you know, the roofer doing work on your property, the real estate sign, small political signs, although I will note that the State of Illinois preempts us on political signs and regulation of those. So we do note that in the regulation because there's the potential that that might become invalid at some point, too. So, so generally, once you get to a larger sign, larger than six square feet, that would require a permit, that does, that is also the case in the commercial industrial districts as well. So that would be like, for example, a large real estate sign on an industrial property, that would require a permit. Some of those, those signs do require a permit under our current code as well. So it's kind of, a lot of these changes are carrying over a lot of the regulation we have with new terminology or simpler terminology. I guess the, the trick is then figuring out what the sign used to be is now basically, how long is, how long is a sign going to be up for? That, that is basically how this regulation applies. If it's 30 days or less, you're a temporary sign. If you're longer than 30 days, it's a limited duration sign, and that's between 30 days and one year, and then once you get over a year, you're basically looking at a permanent sign.
How does it affect, so, just because it's easier for people to understand if we can come up with some real-life examples. So I'm a Realtor, and I'm putting a sign in front of a house. How is it different today with the new ordinance versus how it was left today?
In that particular case, there would be no change. Our current code for real estate signs says if it's six square feet or less, it does not require a permit. That is the same case, it's just we're now calling it a limited duration sign.
Okay. And what about if I'm the mother's club and I'm putting up a sign to advertise my upcoming craft sale at the high school?
So it would probably be a temporary sign, because it's less, it's going to be probably up for less than 30 days. It would require a permit if it is a larger sign, but say, for example, if you're a mother's club or booster's club, and you're putting yard signs in people's yards, that would not require a permit. It may require a permit if it's a larger sign going on a prominent corner. In the previous code, that, if you were putting it in a larger sign, say on a commercial corner, there was a process, basically where you spoke to our co-compliance officer, you identified where the signs were going to go, and that was the process. It was kind of an informal, formal process in terms of, you said where you were going to put the signs, they had to be on private property, which is still the case now. But basically, now, they would come under the auspices of a building permit that the owner would have a certain number of times a year that they could put up a larger sign. So they may be using some of their sign allotments to put up a mother's club sign or a booster's club sign.
Okay. What about the random signs, you know, like garage sale signs and those things? Are they, do we just continue to ignore those like we have?
So the zoning code does say that those signs are prohibited, and if you're putting them in the right way, that would still be the case with the current code. It would just be a matter of enforcement.
Okay, so...
Well, just to add to that, what about a large industrial property that wants to put a bigger for-sale sign, and you don't know how long it's going to take to sell, whether it's going to be 30 days, 60 days, or over a year?
Sure. Essentially, and that's, I guess, with this particular type of regulation, that is, I think I probably, someone marketing a property like that would, their intent would be that it would be up for less than a year, because they want to, want to sell the property. Essentially, it would, if it is a sign that would require a permit, it would, it would need another permit, essentially after that year. So the, the question would then be, do we want to have, what type of process would we handle? It would basically, how we're proposing it would be basically a permit renewal. It would be a, a new permit, but it's basically, I'm reapplying for the previous sign.
But today, the initial sign, they don't have to get a permit.
In...
Is that true?
There, the zoning code does require that for real estate signs of a certain size, 16 square feet or more, that it does require basically administrative design review between 16 and 32 or 64 square feet, depending on the zoning district. So it, there is a requirement for a permit. Does everybody get a permit? Not always.
And then, Drew, I would ask, you know, for groups that we know put out regular signs, whether it's Main Street or the Chamber, or the Mother's Club, will we be notifying them to let them know that there's a change to our code?
We did notify the, the Chamber and Main Street when we started the process. In terms of that there was changes to the code, we can certainly notify them when it is implemented as well.
Dan, you got a question?
I'm just curious, after reading the ordinance, I noticed that we didn't put any language in there regarding signs that could be considered tacky? No. No, for real, though, and I, I'm hesitant to ask this question because we're on TV, the press is here, and like, all of the most important Realtors in Fox Valley are standing behind you. Are there any, are there any loopholes in this? Are there any unintended consequences with the way this is written? Have you guys sort of tested this thing to make sure that we're, we're not creating an environment that's unfair to business, because I certainly don't want to be viewed as unfair, or, you know, would encourage people to put signs up that say Marge in their front yard?
Well, I think our intent, when we were writing the code, was to try and address the loopholes, as you said. Of course, when you go to actually apply a sign code, that's when you may notice things that were the unintended consequences. I believe between the city attorney and staff on hand, we, I believe we, we think we've addressed most of the issues we can think of, but there certainly could be other things that present themselves along the way, and we may be back here with additional changes in the future.
And then lastly, there is a, there is a real cost involved with monitoring these signs, so it wouldn't necessarily be fair for this group to completely waive fees, would it?
Sure, there is staff time involved in terms of monitoring of signs, for processing of applications. If, if there was a permit but no fee, that, basically, that is being shouldered upon by the general fund and the general taxpayers, rather than the person seeking out a sign.
So we'd be making a concession to the business community, and our taxpayers would be paying for it instead.
Right.
Ms. Chalky?
Yeah, of all the things that I get called and then get involved with down here on a weekly basis, I find myself spending more time with Scott Bune and his team than probably any other city department, because this is kind of a moving target, and it's ongoing, and it never quits. And I will tell you that I think right now, the ordinance that we have in the books has been pretty good ordinance, and I understand why we have to change it and everything, but there's, there's just a couple of points I would make. You know, a lot of this is on private property, and private, so if somebody wants to put the sign up, that's fine. You know, Realtors have a really good, I think, reputation in Batavia of not abusing this. They're not spreading their signs all over every place else, and they seem to be self-regulating. But the, the problem that we have is, is that a lot of people don't bother to read the ordinance or know about the ordinance. And just as an example, I'll give you two things that I know we've, we've been fighting with, and I want to say we have an excellent staff, and Scott and his people go out and are on this every day. Almost every day, we're out doing one. But the two things we get is, one we get, I'll call it, we have about four or five places in town that are kind of perceived to be the free zones. out in front of the Midwest Bank, out at Wilson and Rando, right on the corner there by the retention pond, and I've even seen people trying to put signs in that corner and literally fall into that wheat field behind it there into the water, because there's already so many signs in that corner. And I mean, it gets to be like something you would see in a movie or something where, you know, who can bother to sit there and read all these signs? Another classic is up at the corner of Prairie and Wilson there, right where the railroad track that dissects the yard there on the southeast corner. That's another hot zone for these. And then out on East Wilson Street at Kirk Road, our friends at Speedway Gas Station have really done us a great favor, because that used to be a heavy place for signs, but now they've taken all these down. But then every now and then, we'll get some renegades in here that will immediately wanna put some signs up. And the classic one has been Storehedge down here at the corner at Wilson, which we just walked by and talked about tonight. And Rhonda has this unwritten rule that the moment, anytime there's a sign attached to that edifice down there, it's removed regardless if it's midnight or whatever. Couple times, I've been driving by at eleven-thirty at night, and somebody's put a sign down there, so I'll slam on the brakes, go in the park and run across the street, and get it and bring it down there. It's kind of a joke with Rhonda in the morning, hey, I beat you to the sign before you could take it down. So this thing is a moving target, and we can pass ordinances till the cows come home, but I don't think we're ever really gonna totally get everybody abiding by this or playing by the game and playing by all the rules. But I think we have to make this as agreeable as we can to the constraints of the law, but at the same time, keep it respectable, but be, have the constraints, because I think we know when the sign is in violation. And there's, there's just, a lot of it is people wanna advertise a yard sale or something, so they, they think they've seen a sign someplace else, so they're running around town just arbitrarily putting these signs up. And that's where it gets into, gets into being a problem. I mean, we've even, to the extreme, we've even had them down into the cemeteries that we have in town, where they wanna go and put them on the, at the entrance, right on either Batavia Avenue or North Washington Avenue, and have a sign in front of the cemetery. Now, we've, we take those down, but, I mean, this thing just goes all over the place. And the city limit signs, where we have the old city limits things that says "Welcome to Batavia" with the Fermilab high-rise, we've had them attached to that, and we've had them decorate all around the ground to them, and Rhonda will go out and clean those off. But it's a moving target, we gotta have enforcement people, regardless of what ordinance we have, because you're never gonna stop this, there's always gonna be a few that are just gonna go out and do their thing.
Anyone from the public would like to speak about this?
Hi, everybody. My name's Alex Finke. If you don't know who I am, Government Affairs Director, representing Realtors Association of the Fox Valley. And let me tell you, that was the most exciting discussion of a sign ordinance I have ever experienced. I cover a hundred municipalities for the Realtors, and I will say what makes Batavia truly a special community is the desire of staff and elected officials to actively engage stakeholders and make changes to public policy when necessary or when things don't make sense. And staff did a solid job bringing your sign ordinance up to constitutionality. That draft is up to constitutional standards, our legal department has reviewed it, but it is a little bit more restrictive. And of all the things talked about, those were all great things that need to be discussed. I'm here to talk about one small little thing, and it is just the idea of raising the square footage, raising the ability for people to put up thirty-two square foot signs in non-residential areas without a building permit. The Realtors, commercial brokers, it is, it is unnecessary, it is an unnecessary burden to commerce to have, commercial Realtors have to pay fifty-five dollars and pull a building permit for every sign, every year, they put one up. Right now, in commercial districts, and if I met with you individually, I did actually get this wrong, so I apologize. In commercial districts right now, they can only put up four-by-four, so sixteen-square-foot in commercial districts. They can put up thirty-two square foot signs currently in industrial districts without a building permit. So, but this is a chance for us to get this right, it's just one small little change. And as Scott already said, if we don't get this right the first time, let's review it in a year or two. I'm never gonna, I mean, I'm perfectly acceptable, you guys looking at me and being like, Alex, we tried it your way and it was chaos. We gotta make it more restrictive. I'll come up here, smile politely, apologize, and sit back down. And you all know, I love to hear myself talk. So I am pleased asking you to, just in non-residential areas, raise the sign area, the allowance of sign area up to thirty-two square feet for, for the limited duration sign, and then pass the sign ordinance as is, because outside of that one modest change, it's, you're covered from, our lawyer, our general counsel believes you're covered from litigation standpoint fully, and it, and you, and staff did a really nice job. Like, I would like to take all the credit, but I actually can't. Like, Drew and Scott did an amazing job protecting residential Realtors and making sure that they were, they were already taken care of in residential districts. So, I mean, I can hang out and talk more if you want, I can read the Bible or something. Or I can answer questions, in all seriousness, if anybody has questions.
Can you read the MLS guide to us?
Yeah. So, yes, yes, I can.
With regards to the bigger signs, are you mostly concerned about industrial districts or commercial and industrial?
Commercial and industrial. Four-by-eight is a standard, and it's a standard for visibility and safety. What you can't have in those areas is you do not want people unnecessarily stopping and slowing down in traffic to try to cap, to try to read or take a picture of a phone number or a website. That's why commercial brokers use a larger size that doesn't fall, whereas your residential Realtors will use a three or four or five foot, you know, square foot sign as a standard for sale size.
So, one of my questions along those lines is that, in the commercial industrial, if we're raising it to thirty-two square feet, we still can't ask the question, what kind of sign you're putting up?
Correct.
So, in that instance, theoretically, these commercial properties can be like, hey, we're gonna make all kinds of money because we're gonna rent space, allowing people to put up a thirty-two foot sign, and because they don't have to put up, they don't have to pay a permit, so they could put up an advertisement for a year theoretically in that case. And then, now that becomes a nuisance. Am I correct in that statement?
Yes, it could, absolutely. There's lots of hypotheticals.
And...
Yeah, and that's, and that's, that's the concern, is that because these have to be content neutral, we really can't look at what the sign is. And I understand the Realtors Association and the issues they have with, you know, paying for the signs, and I think, you know, we can talk about fees and things like that because that's, that's something that, you know, we'll probably wanna look at separately from this. But, you know, if we have, you know, if we allow a thirty-two square foot sign, we're gonna have to allow a thirty-two foot sign for everybody. And it doesn't matter if it's a church, or a Mother's Club, or whatever, and we're not gonna have a permit, we're not gonna have an easy way to track that. And that's part of the reason for the permits, is the actual tracking mechanism, because, you know, there's certain limitations on, you know, how many signs they can have, and how big they can be and everything else. If we don't have a permit, then, you know, we're not gonna have any way to really limit it or govern it. It's, I mean, you could say that it's in the ordinance, but I've done that in other ordinances where we regulated certain things, but we didn't require a permit, and, you know, there's just no way to really regulate and control it.
So the, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one thing on that. You do get a little bit of, you regulate it a little bit by where you zone it. So you can restrict it to zoning, to commercial and industrial areas. So that's, that's one point. And two, I mean, I asked the question at Planning Commission of, you know, because right now in the books, you require a permit for thirty-two square foot signs in commercial areas, and is it a problem now? And I was told that we don't know. So, I mean, if it's not, I mean, I'm fine, if it becomes a problem, I will literally come here and apologize. I just don't, it doesn't seem, again, as the mayor eloquently said, you know, you do have some issues, but it's not necessarily like a thirty-two, like, these are not, you currently don't have a ton of these problems. And the people that break the signs, that break the sign ordinance, probably gonna continue to do it despite the change, you know, regardless either way of the change. And this is just a way to take a small step and, and not affect Realtors, which, trust me, I understand is not your intent in any way. It's just, it's just a negative externality.
Dan, you had a question?
Question, question for Scott. Is, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, within ten grand, can you estimate how much we take in in fees per year, and what implications would be if we were to waive?
For signs?
Yeah.
You're talking about just temporary signs or all signs?
Hundred thousand, ten thousand, forty thousand.
A few thousand?
A few thousand.
A few thousand, yeah.
So we could extend it all the branches?
And again, and again, we're not, we're not, we're not, you know, we haven't been very diligent about certain signs, you know, following up on permits for certain ones, just because of, you know, the ability for our code enforcement people to do it. So, you know, if we did, we'd probably be bringing in a little bit more than that, so...
I recognize it's a policy decision, but you have a philosophical problem if we waived the fee?
I do because of the fact that, you know, there is staff time involved in doing this. I mean, you know, we have, we get thousands of permits every year for various things, and the fact of the matter is if we're gonna now process permits and not charge a fee, or not regulate them in any way, because if we don't, if we don't require a permit, honestly, we're not regulating it. We're just not, because there's no way for us to go back and track it.
We're just tracking it.
Right. There's no easy way for us to track it if we're not requiring a permit. And there is time. I mean, we have, you know, processing the individual permits, you know, going out and inspecting it to make sure it's in the right place, it's the right size that people are looking for, making sure that they haven't duplicated the number of signs or gone beyond what the ordinance says for limitations of signs on individual properties. And if we don't have a permit process, you know, then there's no real easy way to do it. If we wanna talk about the fees for signs in general, you know, I think that's something we're open to, to talk about. Other communities, as we mentioned in one of the, you know, I think memorandums that went out was, you know, we're not unusual in charging for these types of fees, of signs. So, you know, we would be kind of in the middle of the pack at fifty-five, but certainly if we think that that's too much, you know, we can, what we could do is, our suggestion would be is to implement this, and then have this go back, or have it maybe delayed for a couple of months, and then we can go back and look at the fees issue and bring that forward to you separately and say, okay, you know, let's, let's look at this and see how we wanna do it. I mean, we can look at it and say, okay, maybe the initial fee is too much, maybe we wanna reduce that, maybe the renewal is something that we wanna look at, maybe not charge fifty-five dollars every year for that, you know, because especially if they're not making any substantive changes, I can certainly understand why that would be a concern of, you know...
I definitely appreciate it. The only reason I'm having trouble with the fees issue, because I've actually spent a little bit of time thinking about this, is it would seem to me that filling a vacant building and helping a building get vacant means more jobs, means more taxes, the more times we can... I didn't mean for plus. A lot of money is made on the moving of property, I can just say that much. And if our investment is literally just a couple of grand, I don't have a problem tracking them, but I'm curious if it would have any kind of effect on increasing Batavia? Would we be more attractive for brokers to come look at, 'cause they say, hey, you get a free sign?
Dan, I question, Scott, maybe you can answer this, and maybe Alex would need to answer it, but is, is the issue here the permit process or the fee, or both?
It's both.
Yeah, it's absolutely both. I mean, it's not, I mean, trust me, you don't wanna be nickled and dimed from a, from a truly financial standpoint, but as all of you, and I know that you're all technically compensated as city council members, but it's not close to what, the time that you actually put in, and as you sit here at eight forty-five on a Tuesday night, you realize that you're...